All right, we will call the Missouri City Council to order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There's a form of council, everyone is here. And if you will stand are Thoroughgood, Marshall High School, Air Force Junior ROTC. We'll post our colors and lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in the signing of the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. King? This portion of the council meeting, we would like to salute you. Mrs. Etha Rice King for her continuing commitment to partnering with the city. In November 2015, she volunteered to assist the city in the WCA, that's the trash company, in the production of an educational video that has been instrumental in educating citizens about the new solid waste services. Ms. King allowed MCTV to film the new solid waste pickup process in front of her home on Foxborough Lane in Hunters Glen 5, provide an invaluable view to residents on how the system works. Ms. King and her family have lived in Missouri City for 20 years, and I've been on you long enough. She is a graduate of the 2014 Missouri City Citizens University class, and she is the previous president of Hunters Glen 5 HOA Board and a current HOA Board member. Her contribution helped result in the highest successful citizen outreach project, and to date, the video has received more than 2,757 views. Thank you very much.
If anyone has seen the video and you saw the trash and stuff that was out there, that goes to my husband. He's the one that did the cutting of the trees and placing it all out to the curb and everything. I just volunteered your service. So why don't y'all give Larry a hand up? Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
All right, Randy, you up? You and all the Men for Change guys.
Yes, I will. I'd like to thank you, Mayor, and City Council for letting us come before you today to present. We really would like to thank the city for, and Men for Change is an organization of about 45 people in Missouri City. We donate our time and our resources to better our community. And what we did in partnering with the city, the city let us have space in Buffalo Round Park, and we do a community garden. And we've had several harvests. On our harvests, we donate all the food to...
Second Mile Food Bank.
Second Mile Food Bank. These are the members of Men for Change, and we recently received and applied for a grant through the Houston Area Galveston Council for projects 500,000 or less. And employees happened to be there, Councilman Emery happened to be there that day, and we were presented the award, and we want to thank City Council. And these are two guys here, right here, and all of us, actually. They harvest and get volunteers for that garden, and we really like to thank you. And we have a presentation, a slide. It's running.
It's running.
It's running. And we really enjoy, we're members of, we're all members of Missouri City Council, citizens of Missouri City. And we really enjoy our community. How many scholarships have we given?
We've given, it's about our 21st year, and I know we've given about $150,000 in scholarships in the appropriate area.
As you alone, we gave 21. The schools are Elkins, Marshall, Willer Ridge, Dulles, Hightower, and we do Stafford and Stafford, and we do also something called a Wild Card. So if you're not in Missouri City, you can apply at our website, and we consider you, and we really want to thank you and acknowledge.
Now, I think our thanks goes to you guys. I mean, what you're doing out there, our little contribution of providing the land for you to do it on was simple. You guys do all the work, but the big thing is, is y'all taking those fresh vegetables over there to the Second Mile to give those to people that, you know, a lot of them are shut-ins, they don't have the opportunity to have fresh vegetables. And looking at some of those pictures, that's a pretty good harvest.
Oh, real good harvest.
Yeah, I remember when we first started out this, I said the hardest thing that you're gonna have is finding people to keep the weeds out of it, you know? And come work it. And I think now we've got water to it.
We got water to it?
Which I think we helped get that over there in the park, but it's a fantastic project, guys. And like you said, they're all Missouri City people, and you're putting it back in the community, and that's what Men for Change is about. And thank you.
Yeah, okay. Just like to mention that, this has been a, of course, the project is, it was Men for Change, and you're all guys right here, Missouri City, donated the water and the land, and Edna did the funding for us. So right now, we in pretty good standing with funds. We don't have to sell anything, raise anything. We can probably sustain ourselves for the next couple of years without having to do anything, you know? So like Randy mentioned, most of the products go to Second Mile Food Pantry, right in the neighborhood. The volunteers do get a chance to take some home because we want them to be able to share in some of the non-high-yield crops. Most of the high-yield crops, like the squash, but cucumbers, tomatoes, go to the Second Mile because we can get, so we've done at least the first year about 650 pounds of fresh veggies. And the second year, right at 500 pounds, this year, 2015, and we're looking to do the same or better for 2016.
And you guys also have your functions at our city center.
We do, we use the city center for our function, and Mayor Pro Tim Smith has been real active in helping us to organize.
We haven't gotten him in the garden yet, right?
We haven't gotten him, we're always looking for volunteers, so anyone who's got volunteer sign up. Please come.
I noticed he ain't pulling any weeds.
He hasn't been pulling any weeds, he hasn't been pulling any weeds, but we really appreciate your vision, City Council, in providing this opportunity for us. And we got, that's the award we got, that's the award we got. And then if you notice, Floyd made the picture too.
I'm on Floyd.
They haven't been over pulling any weeds, have they?
We're gonna get Jerry over there too.
When Jerry comes over, I'll come.
Okay, okay, we always get used to helping hand.
One other thing, it was kind of surprising because HGAC, Houston Area Galveston County, they serve 13 counties around the Houston metropolitan area. And when we applied for this award and got it, the grant, it was surprising, we didn't know the scope of it. We, when we got there, there were some other groups, 513C, that had projects over 500,000 and fewer, under 500,000. Obviously slightly under 500,000. But we, they had some distinguished judges that judged each project, and it just, I think because we call it the sewing project where you're changing lives, giving our families to get a chance to see fresh veggies being grown. And one of my memories in the last two years of seeing kids, seeing sweet potatoes come out the ground, you know?
Yeah.
And not only kids, I saw one 50-year-old lady had never seen anything out the ground, and it's very rewarding to see families come there and check the garden out, you know?
Very good. Well, thank you guys for what you do in the community too.
Will Willis is our president right here.
Head garden.
My neighbor.
That's awesome.
You think they put a fence around that garden? There's some beautiful stuff over there.
Yeah, and there's a fence around it. Keep the animals out of it.
And the poachers.
And the poachers diving over, taking their tomatoes, their tomatoes off. All right, it's good. Sharon Valiant, will you please come up?
Oh, man, they got all the photos up there.
Mayor, Council, and members of Missouri City community, we're here tonight for a bittersweet reason. Sharon Valiant, who started work with the city of Missouri City in December of 1994, has left us and started today as the Director of Public Works for the city of LaPorte on that. Sharon started as a construction inspector in Missouri City, became an operational project manager, then the Assistant Director of Public Works, and now she is serving the role of Director of Public Works for the city of LaPorte. When Sharon started, Courtright Road was a two-lane asphalt open-ditch roadway. The Anna Parkway stopped at McKeever Lane. There was no Sienna or Riverstone development. The Brightwater Community was really just starting, Colony Crossing Community was really just starting. Fort Bend Toll Road was not in existence. Missouri City had no utility program and no surface water plant. We did not run or operate any traffic signals except for one that was isolated. We now run 54, 58, somewhere's in that neighborhood. And Sharon grew with the city. Sharon was instrumental in many non-traditional items. She was the lead in public works during Hurricanes Ike and Rita, and during Ike, she was actually awarded by the Texas Public Works Association EOC Manager Award for her actions during that timeframe. She was instrumental in moving the Dew House from its location on Highway 6 to Kitty Hollow Park, which required demolishing basically all the traffic signals along Highway 6 and restringing them in one night. She was, started off her work in the 1994 flood in Missouri City as a brand-new employee, but she was also instrumental in many rain events between then and now, including some significant ones this year. She was here and on the ground in the middle of the night when the home on Covey Trail exploded, and she is responsible for a lot of the residential development that you see has occurred in the city of Missouri City. My biggest compliment to Sharon is Sharon's been my right hand in public works for two decades. We've worked together since 1995. When I got here in 1995, I was told as a co-op student that I was gonna learn from this person who was an inspector for Tech Dot and was real strict and really a professional when it came to construction inspection. So I was kind of dreading the person I would meet. Fortunately, it was Sharon on that, and I learned a very, very large amount from Sharon. She's been instrumental in many of our processes that today we take for standard. For example, she developed our mudjack procedures and processes for mudjacking. She's handled our sidewalk and street maintenance oversight for many years, and she has been the focus of many compliments from customers, our citizens of Missouri City. I think looking at her staff that's in the back here and their willingness to come out and support you is a testament to just how great of a person Sharon has been. There's also a couple other people that wanted to step up and say a few words, so if I can invite Tom Wilcox and Catherine Ostroff to the podium and let them say a few words.
Hi, everybody. My name's Catherine Ostroff. I work for RPS Clots Associates. I'm a civil engineer, and we're an engineering firm, and I've done some work here with the city, working with Sharon, but I've spent a lot more time with her through a professional organization, the American Public Works Association, which Scott just mentioned, that she's received recognition from, not just the ones that he mentioned, but many times. She's been the state president and a local president, and encouraged me and guided me and mentored me, and I'm currently an officer in the organization. I've been involved for over 10 years, and I just want to thank you for setting such a great example and teaching me how important it is to be involved in the community and not just at your job, and also being such a good friend. Congratulations.
My name's Tom Wilcox. I am the former General Manager of the Riverstone Development. I retired about two years ago, but I felt compelled to come here this evening and publicly express my support and my appreciation for all that Sharon has done for me and my staff over the past 15 years at Riverstone. And words just can't express, it's difficult when you lose an employee after 21 years. As a citizen and a land developer, which a lot of people would say land developers are always at odds with the city, that's not the case with Sharon. I won't say that about Scott because we like to arm wrestle a lot. It's not the case about Sharon. I've always found her to have a welcoming, professional, can-do attitude that has always transcended into getting things done in a fair and expeditious manner. And I just want to thank you, Sharon, for that and wish you all the very best, and congratulations on your new chapter in your life.
All right, it's my turn. You know, I think one of the smartest sayings that I was part of as mayor in 1994 and the rest of this council was, is bringing Sharon on board. So I have been here ever since Sharon came to work at the city and shortly after that when Scott did, and I've seen Sharon grow up in that position and deserve what she is going to do. You know, I think Sharon is one of those people, and I said at her retirement party the other day, she's a perfect example and reflection of the city of Missouri City. Her "I can't" attitude has never failed her. I can call Sharon, as well as any citizen can call Sharon or could, and say, you know, I've got this problem, I've got this street problem, and Sharon said, I'll take care of it. As I said the other day, even lost dogs, and whether they were our dogs or Stafford's dogs, Sharon didn't care, she took care of it. But that was, I think that's what Sharon instilled in her, the guys that are behind you back there, is that regardless of what job they're doing every day, they're going to be out there in the trenches, in the streets, taking care of our public works and our citizens. And Sharon has been an inspiration to a lot of people within the city through her leadership, not only on the state levels, but all those organizations she's in. And as I told her the other day, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to keep up with it because Sharon likes to post pictures I won't talk about. How was Motto Grill anyway? Okay, but anyway, you know, Sharon is going to a city, and I told her city manager, I said, now it's time to quit stealing people from you because that's also the city where our former city secretary went. So not that Patrice had anything to do with stealing you, but I'm still blaming her for it. But Sharon, on behalf of not only City Council and myself, but the citizens of Missouri City, this is just a small token of appreciation that says Sharon Valiant, an appreciation of 21 years of service to the city of Missouri City and its citizens, and I just want to present it to you.
I can't stand her right in the back of the city. Wow, is all I can say for the moment. Oh, my goodness, I honestly did not expect this, but thank you very much for all of your kind words. Scott, I feel old, oh my goodness. No, right, right. But yes, yeah, right at 21 years ago, Missouri City gave me my start in public works, and I'm very appreciative of that. The city presented me with a lot of challenges and opportunities, and I took them. I'm glad I did. They allowed me to succeed and achieve, and I would not be where I'm at today if it had not been for Missouri City giving me that chance. And so I, Mayor, I thank you for that. And Council, thank you very much for your support. And Anthony, although I didn't know you that long, I really do appreciate your support while I was here. Thank you. And to, and this is, these guys here, they made my job easy. I didn't have to work very hard at it. So these guys, thank you very much. Thank you all for being there for me. And with the development community, I love that part in my life. Thank you for being a part of my journey. And to the rest of you and all the citizens, thank you for being a part of my journey. Thank you. I wish you all well.
It's an opportunity for anyone to address council, and I didn't have anyone sign up. Item five, staff report, city manager announcements.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Council, happy Monday. Team members in all of our departments continue to make proactive progress in strategic projects. Here are some agenda updates that I wanted to share with the council. We have two exciting community events that are scheduled for this Saturday. The Second Annual Black History Month Celebration Kickoff Ceremony will convene at 2:00 PM on the steps of City Hall. The event is a partnership among the city, Fort Bend ISD, HCC, and the Missouri City Black History Month Celebration Committee. The program will feature musical performances, cultural expressions, and remarks from elected officials. I want to take this time to thank Mayor Pro Tim Smith, who has done a yeoman's job in working and pulling this event together with other key stakeholders in the community, but his leadership has been invaluable. Later that evening, my 11-year-old daughter reminded me of this because it's her birthday, will be hosting the popular Dad and Daughter Dance, so she will be my date on that evening. All dads and daughters are invited to put on their dancing shoes and come out to enjoy the 20th anniversary of this annual tradition. The theme for this year is A Night in New York City, and it will be a big bash complete with Central Park, carrot fries, Brooklyn-style pizza, cheesecake, Ralphere prizes, confetti, cannon, and of course, some groovy tunes. So she told me to make sure I have my dancing shoes on. We also in the process of beginning our process for our fiscal year 2017 budget. Our team remains focused on maintaining the city's excellent fiscal fitness. At this time, we are duly working on completing our fiscal year 2016 goals and identifying milestones for 2017. So as part of that effort, our budget kickoff meeting is scheduled for Monday, February 8th at 9:00 AM, and as we move forward, we'll keep you apprised of all of our developments. Our Leadership Luncheon Series, since 2012, as you may know, Missouri City has utilized the Leadership Luncheon Series to bring together executives, entrepreneurs, and innovators from throughout the region and the county to discuss trends and challenges facing our business leaders today. On our fourth year, we plan to launch on Thursday, February 11th, the fourth year of the Leadership Luncheon Series, and our guest speaker is gonna be Jeremy Garner, who's the principal at Tremel Crow. He will discuss the success of the Lakeview Business Park and also the future development for Park 890. One of the things I wanted to make sure that the community was aware of is an upcoming Comprehensive Plan Symposium. The process continues to strategically update the comprehensive plan, and staff is currently collaborating in preparation for this project symposium, which is gonna be on Thursday, February 18th at 7:00 PM. We have changed the event venue to be at the community center in the City Hall complex and look forward to showcasing the newly renovated facility to residents and stakeholders. And as part of our community outreach on the plan, staff shared an overview most recently, and I attended this event the other evening, with the Citizens University members, and there was some great, great dialogue on the future plan, and we received some invaluable input. The upcoming meeting on February 18th, and I want to reemphasize this, is very critical in the overall success of the plan update, so please make sure that your family and friends and neighbors come out and let your voices be heard. We sent out some information to the council this week regarding a new fire engine. Fire and Rescue Services rolled out a new engine last week as part of its safety fleet. The new truck, fire truck, is housed in Station 3 on Texas Parkway and was a capital purchase of over $500,000. The vehicle features a 2,000-gallon-per-minute pump, storage capacity for 750 gallons of water, compressed air foam, and foam for other firefighting purposes. The vehicle is unique in that it's smaller than the rest of our fleet in the department's fleet, but it provides more maneuverability while providing the same capabilities. So I want to say thanks to Chief Russell Sandler, job well done. Lastly, last week, representatives from all of our departments participated in the three-day leadership seminar at City Center led by mediator Anton Gardner, who's the Director of Leadership Development at the Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service. In the interactive sessions that we had, team members received presentations from Mr. Gardner on proven techniques to assist Missouri City as we move towards a high-performing organization. We are very committed to that, which is one of council's strategic goals, and we want to thank the team for coming in at all levels of the organization to participate in the HBO seminar. Lastly, special thanks again to Sharon Valiant, outstanding public servant. We're so proud of her and appreciate the exemplary service that she's provided to the city and the citizens for more than 21 years. Kudos also go to Health Inspector Elena Abraham and her commitment to ensuring area food establishments meet the criteria set by our city ordinance. Based on her efforts, she's gonna be profiled in the Fort Worth Ben Star as part of their Civil Servant of the Week feature. The news article will highlight her accomplishments with the Clean Restaurant Awards and the high-level service that she provides to the businesses and residents of Missouri City. Officially, the last thing, Mayor, I want to salute our parks, forestry, and public works teams for their continued work on the exterior areas and landscaping surrounding our City Hall complex. We have a ways to go, but they're doing a yeoman's job so far in trying to get this facility up to par so it can be something that our community can be proud of. That concludes my report at this time.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
If you need some pointers on the dad and daughter, Lawrence has been to 15 of them.
Okay.
But he still can't dance. Right. And his daughter made him look good at all those too. All right, item six is a consent agenda, is our motion to approve the consent agenda printed.
Moved to that.
Councilman White made the motion, Councilman Rulis made the second. All those in favor? Motion here is. Item seven are public hearings. There are no public hearings and ordinances. Item eight are appointments. There are no appointments tonight. Item nine are authorizations. 9A is to consider awarding a contract for the reconstruction of G-. eight is to consider awarding a contract for the reconstruction of Gregory Boulevard.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, an exciting time is that it's been a little bit of a long time coming, but we're here to present the contract to reconstruct Gregory Boulevard from McLean to Fondren. We've put that project out for bid, and we came back with the best bid is Conrad Construction. Mr. Conrad is here representing his firm. We're excited to move forward with that, as we've talked about, and to move that forward. So like I said, we'll start as soon as we can get authorization to move, but there will also be a coordination time with Fondren WCID, as they'll be doing utility replacement as well at that time. So we're looking about a year's worth of construction, so there will be some time coordination with the residents. We'll be meeting with the HOA on a regular basis to give them updates and communicate through our communications department as well.
So are we going to have any type of, I know you said you'd meet with the HOA, but what about just the entire community? Before we get started, are we going to do any type of information session with them?
That's what we'll handle through the HOA.
Okay.
Through that. We believe that's the best course of action to do, because they can have the biggest and broadest reach. And we've already been in contact with their secretary to be there, and we'll be meeting with them next week. I believe it's on the 9th on Tuesday.
Okay, okay.
So please, if anyone's listening, please be there in attendance. Ask the questions so we can talk. Mr. Conrad will be there as well, and we'll have a set of time.
And if we have those posters, if we could bring those, that would be great, because I'm always getting questions on which one did we pick, even though, you know, we've had them at several meetings.
Which, which?
Which design?
Oh, which design?
Yes.
We're doing, yes, I'll bring them, but we're looking at a straight reconstruct. We're not going to go into the trees. We've kept out, so you can keep that area. We'll still keep the same profile. We're going to make sure sidewalks are on both sides. So we're really doing some enhancements, but in the end, it's still going to stay the same look. I mean, we had a lot of input that, from the community, to keep those trees, but then an asset to that is that we'll also be putting our approved monuments out in front, so that you'll see that entrance monument as well.
And they're going to replace the drainage out there also?
They will be, the mud will be working on some drainage enhancements in terms of fixing some areas that are the spurs from the inlet back to the main line, so you kind of don't get that wavy road. They're going to look at that as we tear up the road.
Okay, okay.
That's your motion?
Yes.
Second.
It was a second. Councilman Wyatt. Councilwoman Ford made the motion. Councilman Wyatt made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item nine B, consider authorizing agreement for material testing services for Gregory Boulevard. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Ford made the motion. Councilman Wyatt made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item C is consider authorizing purchase of fleet vehicles through the Houston-Galveston Area Council cooperative purchasing program and through a cooperative purchasing agreement with Fort Ben County.
Yes, Mayor and Council. This will be continuing our fleet vehicles program, replacement program. As you'll note, that we had about five vehicles that are up for replacement. That'll be a Ford unit for Parks and Rec, a Skid steer, a dump truck, and a new Holland tractor for the parks. Those are sitting in there that they will be replaced. As part of the fleet replacement, we waited to talk about lease options, things like that, but we went ahead and purchased. The other item on here as well is that we're going to have a couple vehicles added to the fleet. Two police vehicles associated with the COPS grant that you had back in June. So we'll have two new police vehicles associated with that, and also a new 350 crew cab for the fire department. So those are all packaged together as part of that through the buy board process.
Very good.
Robert, are we retiring vehicles at all?
We are. As you noticed, if you were here today, we had an auction, and vehicles were leaving.
Nice.
So we had a couple police, old police cruisers leave. We sold the Jeep that used to be our, one of our public works vehicles, 4,000, was sold. So yes, vehicles are retiring and moving out. We are actually going through that process right now as part of the budget process. John Forman, our fleet superintendent, is actually going through and rating vehicles to see what's going to be on the next program.
Okay.
So yes, there is a standard out there.
Yeah, motion?
So moved.
Councilman Emery made the motion.
I'll say it.
Councilman Rulis made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item nine D is consider authorizing an interlocal agreement between Fort Ben County and the city of Missouri City for the asphalt paving of Emerald Lakes Drive, Wild Horse Court, and Arrowhead Lake Drive.
Yes, Mayor and Council. We're moving forward. This is that interlocal agreement that we have with Fort Ben County, where we get to supply the materials, and they get to supply the equipment and labor to go ahead and replace. We've done geotech work. This is the time to do it. So we're waiting to schedule with Fort Ben County to go out and mill up a large portion of that street, of all those streets, and then repack in, reconstitute the millings back into the subgrade, and then come over with a fresh new layer of asphalt. As per our budget process this year, this was our asset here, and so we had some opportunity here, and we're looking forward to do that.
From my understanding, that the residents out there were quite happy with the prospect of this moving forward.
Oh, absolutely. We've talked to a lot of several residents associated with how we tie driveways back in. Even some residents have stepped forward that they are looking out to be able to do their driveways themselves to tie into the new asphalt. We will be looking to match back in. If you notice, being out there yourself, some of the asphalt is a little taller. We're going to get that back to the right profile. We did find on our geotech that we had 12 inches of asphalt in there, so we're going to reconstitute and do some things and get this laid out correctly.
If you don't make a motion, they won't get it.
If I don't make a motion?
They won't get it, yeah.
Well, I'll make the motion now.
Councilman Emery made the motion. He made the second.
Second.
Councilman Wyatt made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 10, 10 A is ordinance established in the speed limit.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas establishing a speed limit and a construction zone along certain portions of Gregory Boulevard within the territorial limits of the city of Missouri City, Texas, providing an effective time period for such speed limit, providing a penalty, and providing for severability.
Mr. Ford, you make that motion?
So moved.
Second. Mayor Pro Tim Smith. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. 10 B?
An ordinance repealing ordinance number O1604 adopted on January 11th, 2016, authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Missouri City, Texas General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Series 2016, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 177,670,000, levying a tax and payment thereof, authorizing the execution and delivering of a bond purchase contract, a paying agent registrar agreement, and an officer's pricing certificate, calling certain obligations for redemption, approving the official statement, approving the engagement of certain professionals in connection with the issuance of the bonds, finding and determining that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, and enacting other provisions relating thereto.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilman Wyatt made the motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith made the second. Is there a discussion?
Tell us about it, Bill.
We have the opportunity with the market and the position that it is. We got a call late last week from our FA, Joe Morrow, that market is still primed to be able to take advantage of better rates. As a result, they went back and looked at all the items that we have out there that are callable, and we have 107 million that we could, that are callable. And this, the big one is the plant, the water plant, is callable, and as a result of that, we originally believed that we would see a savings of about $4 million with refinancing. We now see the opportunity for a net of $8 million in savings to the city on this debt issuance. So again, the market's prime, and we're just seeking authorization so that we can go forward and get the best deal or FA can for us. And Joe is here, if you have any questions.
It's gone from four to now eight.
Correct, because we're bringing these other issuances forward to, that we did not have before.
Originally, it was 40, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Now we've been able to add this.
Because the rate, it's now it's 107. We can take on some more.
Correct.
And refinance.
But the big one, again, is the water plant.
Right. Who's going to sell it?
We would have a negotiated sale, and that would be, Joe?
Loop Financial.
Loop and...
Loop Capital would be our book running manager or lead manager, and Curtis Flowers from that firm is here this evening. The 107 million is all your callable bonds. We just said we're not going to get caught again with the market dropping, so we put everything in. We, at this point, see an opportunity to refund 79,695,000, and that essentially, the bulk of that is the surface water treatment plant, and that will double your savings.
That's amazing.
So we're just...
A lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
We want to cover our bases and get everything in. In case rates continue to drop, we're ready and can just move forward.
Just a second, clarity. How do we come up with Loop Financial? How did that happen?
What we, one of the things that we do throughout the years, we receive proposals from various firms. We gathered all of the proposals and talked about it with staff and Loop Capital. We felt had the resources and experience and has been in Fort Ben County and involved in the area and would do a good job at executing this transaction for us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Not we had a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those in favor? Motion carries. Item 11, a resolution, 11 A?
A resolution of the city council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the construction of Hurricane Lane between Trammell-Fresno Road and Lake Olympia Parkway, and for the construction of associated intersection improvements.
Evening, Mayor and Council again. This will be the construction of Hurricane Lane from, as city attorney stated, from Trammell-Fresno up to Lake Olympia Parkway. And this is part of the deals that we've done with FLC Parkway. They've given us the land for free to be able to do that, and the drainage easements associated with that as part of their development. And this was also a texted project, so it's an 80-20 split with that, so we are ready to move forward. Text has already let the project out, and so this is just that regurgitation of the AFA that we had signed previously. There was an amendment just because of costs going up, and so we're ready to roll on our participation associated with that.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith made the motion. Councilman Wyatt made the second. Is there a discussion? Not we'll vote. All those in favor? Motion carries. 11 B?
A resolution of the city council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, approving the submission of the grant application for the Body Warn Camera Program Grant to the Office of the Governor of Texas and containing other provisions related thereto.
Mayor, I move to that.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith made the motion. Councilwoman Ford made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Nice job, nice job.
Way to go. Way to be out there.
He's going to show you all on his body camera.
11 C?
A resolution of the city council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, in support of the submission of an application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for housing tax credits for affordable senior rental housing by M Group Holdings, Inc., making findings of fact and containing other provisions related thereto.
Move to that. Second.
How many, how many, how many apartment units do we have of this nature in Missouri City?
You mean tax credit apartments, the two Huntington developments, the one on 1092 and the one on Trammell-Fresno Road.
Let me put it a different way. How many senior project, 55-plus or over, do we have?
We have, and it should be included in your package.
I think it's, what, 485?
Mm-hmm.
The public can't read my package. That's why I was asking the question.
We have, we have four, we have four that are existing. We have four that are existing.
Okay, and so this would add some more.
Add to that.
Which I think is a good thing. I mean, I met some of the people that live in those. Plus, it gives the city an opportunity to continue to offer some balanced housing for everybody. But a lot of those people are not just from Missouri City. There are people that are moving to be close to their children, their grandchildren. So there's a lot of other reasons that we may not think of that these type of housing support. And maybe a few years, you know, me, Don, Floyd, and Alan may end up in...
We could. I think it also fits our strategic plan in the councils.
These are 149 units, is that what?
Yeah. That are proposed for this.
And this is a deviation, and I don't use that word, you know, in a demeaning way, but from some of the other senior living facilities, in that it's going to have some cottages in the back?
This will be a different design. It'll incorporate the main building that you see at the other two Huntington locations, and then this one also has cottages that provide a single-family type environment, but it's all one campus, one development.
And it's 62 and up as opposed to 55?
That's correct.
Okay, so a different, different age group, obviously.
A little higher, but I think the median age is still in the mid to late 70s for these types of developments.
My understanding is this property is already zoned as four apartments?
This property is in the city's ETJ, and so it is per our agreement with the CNA Development Agreement. The land use plan does allocate this as a multifamily area.
Yeah, I think one of the big differences from a straight apartment to this type of facility is that there's really a minimal load on schools as far as residents in this facility, so.
I would hope.
Yeah.
Unless they're 62-year-old seniors.
Well, okay, but if it wasn't, and you had apartments there, you'd have a lot more kids. That's my point.
Yeah, that you're just saying.
And some babies. And well, and there are some 62-year-old babies, okay?
And traffic, and traffic.
Traffic, yeah, and traffic, so. All right. It's a good thing.
All right. There was a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. That takes us to item 12, our city council announcements. Are there any announcements?
I have.
You got any?
Just want residents to be mindful that we will be beginning the process of the budget coming up, and so be mindful of that. Your input is very important to this, so just look out for updates. We'd love to have community input regarding that.
Good. Jerry? Alonda?
Yes, I want to thank two small business owners who did a water drive this weekend. John Simmons and Jerry Hall. They own Ice Doggies and Cigar and Cufflinks, and they did a water drive for Flint, Michigan residents on Sunday, and they collected quite a bit of water to send to Flint, Michigan. And just to be aware, FedEx is sending water to Flint. If you collect it for free, they're not charging, so.
Is that how you got horse smoking those big cigars over there?
No, I got sick from the gala.
Who were you sitting next to?
The mayor.
Oh, shit.
Anthony.
I know, I know.
Anthony?
I'm good, thank you.
Don, you want to talk about, well, yeah, you need to remind everybody.
The city manager did a great job.
I know, but...
But this is all...
Give you another opportunity here.
This is the second year that we have a Black History Month program on the steps of City Hall. We'd like to thank Fort Ben ISD, the Marshals, Dergan Marshals High Schools Band and Choir, in conjunction with Missouri City Middle School Band and Choir, will afford us the entertainment. Those kids can sing, and they can play their horns. Secondly, we will have expressions from everyone, from Congressman Al Green, and even Councilman Jerry Wyatt is very much a part of the program, so.
He's not going to sing, is he?
No, we, there's a moratorium on Jerry singing in Missouri City. But we, but we
He can sing.
Certainly would like for everyone to come out.
I can sing.
And especially the members of the diocese. We would appreciate you being there. Thank you. It's Saturday, February 6th. It starts at 2:00 PM.
Right here on steps?
Steps of City Hall.
Anybody got anything else? Very good. Thank you. Do we have, we're finished with the executive session, right?
Done.
We're good.